Good evening, good evening. I'd like to call this July 16th, 2024 Business Meeting to Order. First order of business to appoint a Treasurer of Pro Temps. Move to appoint Board Member Eric Walker, Treasurer of Pro Temps for this evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a vote.
President Smith.
Yes.
VP Wick.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Board Member Lacy. Walker votes yes, and Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Lacy will be in, uh, oh no, that was something separate. Now can we have a roll call?
President Smith.
Present.
VP Wick.
Present.
Dr. Goodwin.
Here.
Dr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Lacy.
Mr. Lacy will be here shortly.
Walker, yes, present. Uh, Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Let us six zero.
Thank you for the pleasure, ladies.
Ladies, to the United States of America, and to your beloved and responsible citizens, one nation, and our individual liberty and justice.
All right, all right, all right. Good evening, good evening. Glad to see so many people out this evening. Hope you all are having a great day. Dr. Lawrence, can you kick us off with a special presentation, please?
Absolutely. President Smith, uh, we have the Dayton Public Schools Foundation here today. This is really exciting. Uh, lots of terrific educators. Uh, three former board members are here. Very exciting to see Ms. Yvonne Isaacs here for the first time in a while. Um, we go, we go way back. So let's, let's come on down to the, to the floor. Let's have the board and myself come down so we can, um, receive the awardees.
Is, is there a presentation?
Or do you want a presentation? We, now or after?
After.
Okay, all right.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board President Smith, Vice President Wick, Superintendent Lawrence, Treasurer Abraha, oops, she's not here, Board Members, Cabinet, and the attending and watching public. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you. I am Nancy Nurney, former DPS Board Member, present Chair of the Board of the DPS Foundation. As you know, our organization's goal is to advance the success of all DPS students, supporting the efforts of you and the District Superintendent to accomplish that. This year, we again made available our classroom awards of up to $500 to all DPS teachers and our school awards of $1,500 to all DPS school administrators. Because of the generosity of your employee donors and our community donors and the help of the PIO's video advertising, we were able to announce our most awards ever this year with almost $20,000. It is our ninth annual round of offering grants. This year, we bring you 37 grants from innovative teachers and principals finding creative ways to reach their students with materials not able to be purchased by the district. Our grants have been diverse, from cooking activities to field trips, to flexible seating options, to orchestra bows, bows, sorry, for their violins, and garden supplies and lots of books. We're grateful to the District's HR Department, the PIO Department, and the Teaching and Learning Departments, as well as the Treasurer's Office for their support implementing these gifts. We're pleased to now have permission to have a donor button for us on the DPS website alongside yours, enabling the public to give both to you and to us. We truly believe that these grants from our donors enable us to directly impact the success of DPS students. As our students grow, so does our community and the value of its future citizens as they give back to our community. I'd like to now present our Dayton Public Schools Foundation Board, community members who guide us. So would you all stand up, please, the DPS Board? And then our grantees and our projects, who will then come up and receive a certificate from us. Hopefully, you can come down to do, to congratulate our awardees. So if you would be so kind as to do so, come down here. Yes, please. Thank you all for your guidance of our school district. We look forward to continuing to serve you and all of our students. Okay, that's a post-oral. If nobody comes, and so is mine.
What's up to you?
Yes, so go ahead with, Bill, I got to speak this morning.
Okay, start here instead of there. That's the school ones.
Oh, okay, so these are not here? What if, they're all good?
No, yes.
Here's three more that came in. Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay. So, go ahead.
Okay, our first recipient is Amber Bell. She is from Roosevelt Elementary, um, and her proposal was educational games. Oh, you think we should leave off the school?
Thank you.
Okay. And, and next we have Carrie Carpenter from the International School. Her proposal was travel to Newport Aquarium. Yes. Next, we have Emily Coleman from Louise Troy. Her proposal was phonics. Next, we have Jo Cooley Love from Edwin Joel Middle School. Hers was a mural at Edgemont Solar Garden. Okay, she's not here, we'll keep going. Erin Dawes from International School. Her proposal was visual aids will help students recognize letter sounds. Do you have her? Okay, okay. Amy Dunaway from Kaiser. Hers was basic crochet stitches. Next, we have Elizabeth A. Friedlander or Friedlander? Friedlander from Roosevelt. Thank you so much. She did manipulatives to help with spelling and reading for severe disabilities. Next, we have Janice Gomez from the International School. Her project was basic readers. Thank you. No, 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 okay. What's her last name? Lionheart? Lindhart. Next, we have Stephanie Lindhart from the International School. Her project was serve food measure and estimate it. So Cooking with Kids. Next, we have Brittany LaPage. She's doing fun and functional seating solutions, and she's from Kaiser. Okay, she's not here. Any of these? Okay, here. Next, we have Patricia Lewis from Roosevelt. She did gardening. Is it Ashley Mann? Next, we have Ashley Mann from Louise Troy, and hers was phonics. Okay, next, we have Sarah Swent from Ponets. It was for the Drama Club Materials and Equipment. Which one is next? I'm not sure what you're saying. Please excuse me. I don't know which one you're talking about. I don't see it.
T is before B.
Susan? Susan Trishel? I hope I have that right. She's from Westwood. Taylor? Angela Taylor? Next, we have Angela Taylor from Mound Street. Her project was CPR and AED. Is it Weiss? Okay. Next, we have Donna Weiss from Fairview. Presentation materials. Next, we have Jamie Winters from the Gifted and Talented Program. She's doing gaming materials. Next, we have Jacqueline McCleary from Eastmont, and this is a school award. She's doing ELL literacy supports. Don? Tell, tell me how to pronounce your last name. Don Yaden? Yaden. Don Yaden from Charity Adams. She did math center manipulatives. Next, we have Joanne Casseau from Ponets.
So we have two more that just came in, and so if they'll take their certificates and take them with the board. Thank you. And if you would be so kind as to allow us to have your photos taken with all of our winners, if that's okay? Could you stay right there?
Is that it? Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Our board members? The Jews, my, don't you, don't be shy.
I just came in. You got five. One, two, three. Okay, should I get a few shots of a little closer?
Sure, whenever you would.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you all.
It's amazing, which now, now, see, why they're on sound.
I put it back. Appreciate you.
We got a little meat.
It smells good, too. A lot.
All right. I say I appreciate all of the teachers who are awarded. I'm gonna just give a huge, huge thank you to all of our teachers around the district that go above and beyond on a daily basis to help our children, and just, that was a great, great time to really see all the creativity that goes in for the program, and thank everyone that donated as well. And I was just talking to Dr. Lawrence about getting our PIO team to do some follow-up interviews with staff, students, to really show the impact of, of these awards and how they affect our children's livelihood. So be looking out for that as we roll that out in the near future. Next on the agenda, hearing of the bargaining units. Are there any bargaining units present that wish to speak? See, there are none. Mr. Walker, moving on to hearing of the public, whether anybody signed up to speak to the board today, sir?
We have three individuals.
Okay, as Mr. Walker gets ready for those, please note, complete their request form, which those people did. When called upon, identify yourself, state your name, address, a non-English speaker, will need to provide an interpreter. Address the board as a whole through the president and not board members. Any materials for distribution to the board are handed to the treasurer. Limit remarks to three minutes. The president has the discretion to extend the time. When your time is up, you are to stop speaking. It is inappropriate to address any matter involving pending disputes, grievances under a labor agreement, disciplinary action involving an employee or student, ongoing labor negotiations, concerns of matters that have already been settled, and/or any matter which because of its nature is deemed appropriate to be discussed in executive session. Purpose of the public hearing portion of the meeting is for members of the public to express viewpoints and public concerns. Board Member Walker, you call our first speaker, please.
Lauren Gay.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you all for having me here. Uh, my name is Lauren Gay. I am the owner of Joy Wine, the new wine retail shop and bar on, uh, Third Street between Jefferson and St. Clair. Um, I recently attended a meeting of concern downtown business owners where we discussed issues that we're all facing and how we can kind of come together to uplift each other and address these issues in a way that's productive. Um, a form was sent out ahead of time where we just kind of rated some issues that were happening. The number one issue that we all said was the most important was the downtown perception. Um, and then number two was the DPS busing solution and how that affects us all negatively as, um, small business owners. I appreciate and sympathize with the struggles of a public school, especially one in a downtown urban setting. Um, levies are hard to pass. I'm sure there's a lot of budgetary concerns, uh, along with a myriad of other things. Um, but I just figured I could share my perspective as a business owner and how we, as a community, are perceiving these choices. Um, so number one, obviously, this is a very not safe solution for these students. Um, I'm sure that there have been parents that have expressed concerns and issues. Um, being dropped off at the RTA hub is probably not the best case scenario for hordes of unsupervised children. Number two, um, how the children behave when they're dropped off? I don't know how many times I've seen the police pull apart fights. Ironically, mostly young women. I've literally seen probably a 13-year-old girl get punched in the face in the middle of the street on Third Street, and that's very, very disappointing. Um, and then this also plays heavily into that number one concern of these small businesses, which is what is the perception of the downtown community? I don't know how many times I've spoken to friends that live, uh, not downtown, and they say, "Oh, I don't want to go downtown, it's dangerous." And I think it's all of our responsibility to change that perception. Whenever one of my employees comes to me with a problem, I ask them to suggest a solution, and unfortunately, I am not here with a solution. Um, I realize I, I don't know the inner workings of your budget. I don't know how all of this works. Um, I was told that Windsor offered some buses at one point in time. I'm not sure if that's a rumor or reality. Um, but I am just here to say that I think that these decisions are short-sighted. I think it endangers these students, and it's certainly creating an inhospitable environment for patrons of the downtown businesses. Uh, it has certainly created animosity from the downtown business community as a result towards DPS, unfortunately. And so rather than coming here with a solution, I feel like my purpose here today is just to share a different perspective and to let you know how we are affected, upset, and disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Kessler.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Uh, my name's Tyler Kessler. Um, my address is 2222 North James H. McGee Boulevard, Dayton, Ohio, 45417. Um, I'm actually here with thanks, so I just thank you for this opportunity to share again this evening. My name is Tyler. Again, I come before you today as a representative of the Summer and After School Collaborative. Um, we're a group of organizations that collectively represent and serve over a thousand Dayton Public School students and their families. Um, I work at a center-based positive youth development, uh, program here in Dayton called Adventure Central. Some of you have come and visited, it's been a, a great time. I was here during the May 14th board meeting, uh, to advocate for after-school yellow bus transportation from Dayton Public Schools directly to off-site after-school programs like ours, in hopes of increasing Dayton families' access to the many benefits of these programs. I want to first say thank you to the board, uh, for hearing me then, hearing me now, and I want to throw a particular shout-out and thank you to Mr. Craig Anderson, uh, Mr. Thomas Gray, and Mr. Brandon Calhoun, as well as other representatives from the Summer and After School Collaborative for taking time out of their full schedules to meet on May 29th to discuss how can I partner better to support transportation needs. So thank you all very, very much. Um, I wanted to share briefly that the Summer and After School Collaborative did complete an off-site provider transportation survey, and that was part of a request that was made at that May 29th meeting. Um, eight providers, we were trying to gather some, some thoughts during summer day camp programming, but eight providers were able to participate in that survey, and results showed two things. One, all off-site program providers who participated in the survey did show that district transportation is necessary for success. And attendance records, so post-COVID compared to pre-COVID, um, clearly show that transportation significantly impacts all off-site, uh, organization's ability to recruit and maintain students since the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, number two, 100% of programs surveyed are ready and willing to invite DPS transportation recruiters to our family and community engagement, um, events to help support DPS, DPS's efforts to get more drivers. You know, that's a big, a big thing. We're putting a call out to, um, all of our other organizations as well, and we have our kickoff meeting for the Summer and After School Collaborative to try and get support for that as well. We hear you when you say that, uh, there is a driver shortage, that is a reality. Um, we want to partner to make things better. We're also looking forward to continued conversation about how we can get, hopefully, yellow bus transportation at some point to our programs, um, so we can give that access to our families. But we hope to keep this conversation going overall, and we appreciate the efforts to do so, so far. Um, so thank you all for your amazing work that you guys continue to do to support us and all Dayton students, and I appreciate your time again.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out.
Mr. David Esrati.
Good evening. David Esrati, 100 Moner Street. It's good to see all of you again. So, you're gonna vote tonight on contract for digital marketing. I'd like to tell you more about it, however, a public records request that has yet to be filled 10 days later means I can't. I can't tell you what any of these proposals are or what they're offering, but I do know that if you're trying to hit diversity or local hiring goals, your purchasing department is failing you miserably. Only one local bidder, and while that bidder is fully recognized by the federal government as a diversity goal, your organization doesn't recognize service-disabled, veteran-owned businesses or hubzone certification. By the way, most of Dayton is a hubzone, and it has very specific requirements. You make this process painfully complicated, just like you make enrolling students in your district. I worked with Dr. Burton on these forums in 2011 and won the district, district awards for some, uh, really nice-looking comparisons of which school buildings and where and times and dates. You're, uh, Jill turned these in and won a contest somewhere, gotten an award. But, you still make extra work for your staff from having to manually enter data that could easily be collected online for enrollment. We call that friction in our business. We try to make things as friction-free as possible to get people enrolled. So, you shouldn't have to download documents that you're gonna fill out by hand and then turn them in to somebody who's then going to have to type them in again. It just doesn't make sense. But your RFPs are also a hot mess. 58 pages, 15 attachments, and considering you had bids from $71,000 all the way up to $395,000, you should really wonder what's going on with the, with the lowest bidder and how they're gonna get the job done. Because I can't see the bid when I look at Dayton's website, I don't see any kind of supporting documentation to suggest that they have actual marketing talent. There is nothing on that site. Considering DPS doesn't have anyone with a marketing degree running this RFP or evaluating it, how do you trust them to understand our market and its challenges? And just so you know, the organizations that you are hiring got a zero for community inclusion and only a 1.24 for awards, according to your scoring rubric, which is all that the PIO has supplied me. The whole purpose of having these timelines with review sessions and then business meetings is supposed to give the public time to review and check your work. That didn't happen here. I'd also like to require, question why it requires 58 pages of questions for a $71,000 a year contract over five years, and yet you can award a $50,000 contract with no bids.
You got 30 more seconds, Mr. Esrati.
This district is committed to five Cs under Dr. Lawrence: culture, commitment, communication competence, and collaboration. I'd like to suggest adding change, creativity, and an effort to build constituent confidence to bring it to eight Cs. I've seen the district commit to spending 400K with an out-of-state consultant with a presentation included my perfect title slide and lormipsum text, only to bail out of it two years later. Please, you almost used the same RFP process in 2016 with disastrous results. Let's see you actually implement a few Cs in this process. When you send our tax dollars to Texas, something is either wrong with all the local talent or your process. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes all of our speakers tonight, Mr. Walker.
That does conclude President Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Moving on to superintendent recommendations now.
Thank you, President Smith. I recommend a waiver of the 48-hour rule to present the human resources recommendations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions? May we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, please let the record show that Mr. Lacy is with us now. He's been with us for a while.
Yes.
All right. And Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following human resources recommendations, Section B for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Walker?
So on the HR recommendations, I would like to, on separation, I would like to motion to table item one until our August 13th meeting.
You can't make a motion in a motion. Or you can ask them to amend the motion to table that one.
Well, so if we pull it?
You can pull it until August.
Let's do that.
You can do that one.
You can't pull it until August.
Well, until the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting is August.
Then we'd have to get up the table.
Well, he can't make the motion, so you gotta ask them to amend it.
Or you can amend it, or you can pull it to discuss, and then we could come back and table it.
Let's do that. I'll pull it until after executive session.
All right.
I gotta make the notes.
And that is what you have to do today, Mr. Walker. Any other questions on the motion?
Yes.
You can go first. I'm trying to find it.
Okay. Just to, so the freshman seminar, is that new?
Yes, that is new.
Okay. What will that teacher do?
That teacher will be teaching transition from eighth to ninth, also preparing kids for post-secondary. It's by the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. It's an accredited class that you have to take, either take that or some other course similar to it. We're actually building a communication to send out to parents and students about it right now.
Okay. Thank you. And then the next question I had was on item, building substitute teachers, long-term teacher. How would that affect the long-term teachers in the building and then our provider that we're paying to provide us with substitute teachers?
So it affects us with the providers, the long-term or uncredentialed educators that are in the building. Many of them come from our provider. So what it does is it takes, those people will be filling spaces for teachers who are absent. They become teachers for us of the record for a year, and then that reduces the number of teachers that are in the pool to fill for when teachers are actually absent.
Thank you. I think it's three more, three more questions. Number 40 says a dean of students has stivers. I'm just curious of why would they have a principal and two assistant principals at that location?
I believe the dean of students is one, assistant principal is one, and the principal is one. I don't believe there are, there are not two assistants. So the dean serves as the second assistant.
So the job posting that was advertised for an assistant principal is no longer happening?
You mean for stivers?
Yes.
We use that to put the dean there. So we fill that with a dean instead of the assistant principal. The principal, and I think the team that interviewed thought that was a better candidate than other candidates were there. They were in the hopper.
So the building will have one principal and one assistant principal, and then a dean of students?
That's correct. I think the teacher, the educator, administrator, and I believe they're taking their test in the next week or two. So we expect them to have a license in the next 30 to 60 days.
So we will come back and change this to make them an assistant principal?
That would be a plan.
So why are we moving forward with someone who doesn't have the license now and counting on them passing a test to then get the license? If they don't, then we're stuck again.
Yeah, I think the team thought that they were good enough to bring it to the system and capture it now. And so it's not, it's not something that hasn't happened before.
Okay. All right. The other one for me was on the, the teacher that recommended to go as assistant principal to International, they were originally on as a resignation as a teacher. So now we're offering them an AP role instead?
They were resigning as a teacher because they received an offer to be an assistant principal in another district. They came back and interviewed for International and then turned the other district down and came back to Dayton. So we're really pleased about that.
So within four days, we decided on this one person? Because that's how long the posting has been up and interviews have been conducted for this one person within four days out of all applicants?
I think there were seven applicants, but I think this was the person that they decided to select. And I supported it and put it on for a vote for the board.
Have this person been an assistant principal before?
Never been assistant principal, but a teacher leader, which was the pathway to assistant principalship.
Okay. So I would like to pull item, and I don't even think this has item because the HR document changed. So I don't even know where to find this one at.
It's not listed on there.
Yeah. Okay. That's it for me.
All right. Is this the one you were looking for, Dr. Goodwin?
I did. I did want to know what was on, one of the items on the 48-hour waiver did not make it onto the HR agenda, which is the item that Board Member Walker was requesting to pull. Is it a different form than the full form that we have? Okay. So we're voting on three things here. Correct. Okay. One vote, but it's the three dots. I mean, it's just a new format here.
What is the reason for it to change? This is like, what?
So do you still want to pull number two, Mr. Walker?
Yeah. So number two?
This is number two on the 48 under. Can we, at the next meeting, can these be combined back into the actual document itself? Please.
I did have another, I did have another question.
Go ahead.
One here is the assistant principal for Edwin Joe Brown, but we approved that last week. So number five on, I think this is item one, our, the first document of HR out of, number eight on certified appointments.
I understand that one should be removed, correct?
Yeah, we, we came out of executive last. We can vote it on that one. Also, number four on contract changes, we voted on that one as well.
Any other questions, sir?
That, that's it.
Any other questions on the motion? Dr. Goodwin?
So we have steps and indexes set out. Can, I haven't seen that on our, on our charts before. Can someone explain what those are and how those are being utilized with us?
Hello, Board. The index and steps are indicated in the DEA negotiated agreement, and that's how you determine the salary. I entered those so that you can see exactly what rate that was. Before, it was just a rate. And so if there were questions about if they were placed at the correct salary and step, we would have to go back digging through information where if you put it here, it shows exactly what that salary corresponds to in terms of the education and the level of experience.
Okay. Thank you. So I have two more questions. There are some individuals that are on this board meeting that we've had a board meeting in between their start date and now. So items number six and number eight on page five are examples, just the explanation of again why we have individuals being boarded 15 days after, I mean, after the first meeting for them to be bored.
Can you repeat your question?
We have, I see two individuals that I see on here on page five that their start date was July 1st. We had a meeting last weekend, or last week. I'm just trying to understand why we still have individuals coming up to us late.
So on page five?
Uh huh. The contract changes?
Contract changes, six, line six, line eight. The principal at Wargaman and the assistant principal at Wargaman.
These were given to us after that meeting. That's why they were added to this one.
I hear you, but I think we already knew that, actually, these, I believe these individuals were changed when the administrative scale came out initially and people were moving around. So last week, you said we were going to start doing public shaming for people who submit these things in there. And I mean, although I'm not a, I don't think that one are, again, I'm just trying to get us, this is better that we don't have as many, but these people are already, because these are, if I can ask Dr. Lawrence, are these individuals new employees?
No.
So they're not new employees, but we're getting them boarded late?
Their contracts, it's the contracts, not that they're boarded late. It's the contract, aligned with the scale itself.
Okay. Make that make sense for me.
They have a change in their contract and change in salary.
I understand that, but they had a change prior to, they've had, did they just get the change this week?
We have, we, I think we sent those contracts out at the, at the beginning of the month. So a couple of weeks ago.
This is just another mistake that we're trying to, like, get away from when we get to this point. Because these should, at the bare minimum, they should have been boarded at the last meeting. Because we've had a meeting since then.
I'll get back with you on the details.
Thank you.
Number six and number eight, correct?
Six and eight, both the Wargaman, it's the Wargaman principals, it appears.
All right. Any other questions?
So are we voting on these same ones that we voted on last week again?
Those can be removed. Any other questions? Goodwin?
I wanted to remove number 40 until after executive session. I have questions on the position itself.
All right.
And actually, I can ask the position of that one itself. Are we offering dean of students at other schools? And if not, what makes the justification for stivers to have one?
The principal went through the candidates, and since we knew that candidate was going to take the test, we made some assumptions, and they thought that was the best candidate we wrote, went forward.
No, no, not the, not the person in the position, like, the position of dean of student being offered. What criteria does it take for us to offer that not only at stivers, but if we are bringing that role back? Because I don't believe other schools have that one.
No, other schools don't have it. We're fully staffed at the other schools. And they selected the people that I think, for the most part, they wanted. We do have one at Wargaman. But that's a, that's a case-by-case basis for us.
Okay. I'll ask more questions later. That's it.
Any other questions?
So you pulled 40 until after?
Yeah, going to executive session with it. Do you have another question, Mr. Walker?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Davis. I will say on my end, I don't think I need any, any public shaming. No public shaming for me. Just get our people to tighten up things. We keep working on it. Appreciate your work, ma'am. Seeing no other questions, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Vote is seven, zero.
Next recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of the following human resources 48-hour waiver for the purposes of the administrator and DSS salary schedule as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions? May we have a vote?
President Smith?
President Smith votes yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
And the first person, I'll say yes.
Walker, yes. And Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
I recommend approval of the following resolution: Administrator and DSS Salary Scale Action.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and second. Any questions? Dr. Goodwin?
I got one for the group. Since we are doing the salary scale, does it make sense for us to vote on the position and not the three-year thing? Or does it make sense to change that since we know that that is coming in our next month? Question for the group.
I thought we were doing the salary scale tonight.
Our treasurer's not here, so I don't think so.
I wouldn't do it. We also discussed having some other eyes on it, talk about those things. For me, not, I get why that would be the question, but I also see that all our other salaries also are listed on the salary schedule that's frozen. So my question to that would be, putting that position title, Dr. Lawrence, is there somebody already in that position or bringing into that position? And if so, they would need a similar letter that we sent out to other people to let them know where we are with the salary schedule and that plan that we had, if we're going to vote on it with a salary listed on there?
What position are you speaking of?
The two that are on there.
I think I, so while he's looking at that, my question is, these positions are already advertised, accepting applications, and we haven't even voted to say that these are positions. So at what point, what steps are followed to actually advertise positions prior to the board saying this is a real position in the district?
Okay, I see the position now. We, we move forward with the work with some assumptions. And the board may say, hey, no, we don't, we don't want to have these positions. But we move forward so that we can have the people if they do, because the process is so elongated. So we just, as President Smith says, we just continue to do the work, and if they reject it, they reject it.
But it goes outside of the process of the board of posting the position without it actually existing. So what salary was advertised for the position already before we even got to this point?
I'm not sure what salary was advertised. I'll get back with you on that.
Any positions already filled, or these are positions that... Are these positions already filled or these are positions that? They're accepting applications.
Trying to post, trying to fill.
Exactly.
They're already posted.
So can we, does it make sense? Again, I don't want to approve up to twenty, thirty in a salary knowing that next month we're supposed to approve the actual sales, and I think it's changing from the way we're doing it right now. So does it work for you all to have that first, what that first salary is right there? And not the second and third one?
For me, it's fine because we're gonna, if it changes, it changes because most of them are gonna change in some kind of way. At least it gives us a baseline, because we still need a baseline for the work that's going on. The work that's going on is adjusting the salary scales based on the salaries that we have, so you need something to adjust.
Are you saying that it's fine to change the, like, just do the first year or do all the way to twenty thirty?
I think either way, the first year is what's gonna matter.
Right.
First year is what matters.
It's like we said, that, that first rate, the.
It's already on the salary schedule.
So what?
It's already on the.
Current salary schedules, the thirty-one dollars and five cents and the seventy-one. So any coordinator in the district is making that amount and any executive secretary is making thirty-one oh five.
So, so it's, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, I'm, go ahead.
So it's already approved by the board. That's what we're paying them right now. So the first year, the twenty.
So, so it's basically, you put the, the new, the new position and tied it to that coordinator level that's already on.
Which is already there.
So do we still need to approve this then if it already exists?
No, the, the, the title exists. The same as when we approved the athletic coordinator piece. We had approved the new position, but it was tied into a salary schedule at the coordinator level.
Right, so this is essentially the same, so.
We had to vote on that too?
We didn't vote on that.
We did.
Yes, we did.
We did.
They did a whole presentation about it. It was two meetings in a row.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? All ready for a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next recommendation, sir?
Uh, I recommend approval of the following contracts.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moving second. Do we have any questions on the motion? Yes. Dr. Goodwin, who knows about the walk?
Dr. Jones, can we get a, an update on the cafeterias?
All but, uh, five elementaries have been, uh, completed. And in terms of the, uh, high schools, we're still waiting to get that, uh, contract, um, uh, redrawn.
So is this contract, which, is it targeting the five that haven't been completed? And what are those five that haven't been completed?
You know what, let me get those for you. I have those here. Give me one sec.
Okay.
Mr. Walker?
Um, I, I am curious on what the contract service with regards to the digital marketing, how is that different than what's been used in the past? And essentially, yeah, if they're, and what work have they done so far for any other districts? What's, what's their proof of, like, what can they show that's been achievable?
You're talking about Datam Tech Incorporated, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so what's different is this is targeted, targeted at spaces where we don't normally have, um, coverage right now. And it's also targeted at specific charter school families and, um, and students. And to the bid process, that Datam Tech, they were number one across the board, I think, in the bid process. And I'd have to ask Alex about the other, other work, but that's what, that's what we discussed today.
Okay, uh, so there currently is nothing to show that this will be a success with digital marketing?
I am quite sure this, this is not their first contract. Uh, during that fifty-eight page process that was spoken about earlier, they have to provide, um, samples of sometimes previous work, um, other people who have, um, commented on their work. So I wasn't, I was not a part of this bid process, I'm not a part of that anymore, so I didn't get a chance to read it. I wasn't a reader, but I've been part of one before and typically there's lots of information about what you've done and what you're going to do.
I'd like to pull that one for a separate vote.
Okay.
Then, my next question is, is there any update on the, the X-Tech partners, if this is something that should continue or you are?
Yeah, this is a continuation. Uh, however, it's like a interface, uh, between new technology and our, um, current, uh, devices, correct?
This is to bring those six buildings online with our current partners.
So is it successful currently or is it not?
To say conclusively, uh, I think would be a bit presumptuous, but, um, I do believe that there may be better options out there. Uh, so when's our contract?
Uh, so the maintenance contract is September.
So the maintenance contract is, uh, in September.
So is it better to do these now or wait until next month to get some more information on it?
So the problem with not doing these specific ones now is those six buildings use the old Endala badges, which we can no longer get. They're a Johnson control badge that we cannot purchase anywhere. So right now, if you get a new employee for one of those six buildings, they can't even swipe into them.
Okay.
So, is that your only, would you have to follow up with that, Mr. Walker?
Nope, that was it.
All right, while I have you, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Lacy.
You keep saying six buildings, there's five.
Uh, there may be five now. They may have taken one off the list. It should be, it's all the older buildings, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in that, if this is up in September, well, one, are we currently looking at some alternatives would be my first question? And then think preparing, if, if you prepare something working with Chief Wright as well?
Yes.
About what that status looks like, because I know we've gone through, um, different changes. I know even for us for a while, for, you know, we've had two different badges to get in the separate spaces. So if we can kind of look at that as we get ready to see what we're going to do?
So there's actually two demos set up with them right now so they can see them, two different new tools they can use.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Williams? Appreciate you, Mr. James Williams, not the superintendent. Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, I'm, I'm covering county doing our work, uh, and I saw it last week and I meant to call and ask about this, but what exactly is this?
So we provide, uh, staffing services over there and other social emotional supports. We actually buy law because some of those students are ours, we have to provide extended services.
But, and how does that help us?
How, you mean, how does it help us?
Yeah, how does it help us?
Um, I mean, there are people, um, and we, and again, by law, we have to use that, uh, title, title one dollars to support them.
I know they've come in before, maybe a year or so.
A year ago.
Can we, um, either, either we want to do that or enough, even before then, if we can get something set up. So start seeing where that is, where those, that work is going, if there's any other needs. Um, especially on just top of some of the things that we've been seeing in our community as of late. Just really staying on top of how we can provide the best services and how can we collaborate in the best possible ways. Um, for me, with, uh, waste management, not really too much on the contract, but just going along with that. I know we've had Stivers online with some recycling efforts, um, and not for today. But Dr. Jones has been looking at what that looks like in some of the other buildings. If there's some interest in doing some of the recycling efforts. Been talking over to people at Stivers, seeing how that's gone, success of it, lack of success. Cause I know that really came, a young student came out and really was really passionate about that recycling effort. So just want to lift that up. If we could get some information on that, I would appreciate it, sir. Any other questions? The good one.
It's completely unrelated to what we're talking about, but I remembered it when we was talking about follow-up. Dr. Lawrence, is it possible for us to follow up with the Dayton Foundation to kind of see what happens with those projects?
Sure.
You said it, word, President Smith actually said it when we were walking and I just remembered it and I didn't want to forget to ask. Cause I do wonder how they turn out.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Any other questions? Saying no, maybe we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker, yes. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next recommendation, sir?
Uh, it's the item that I pulled the vote on separate.
You said what?
The contract.
The contract.
There is another one. Can we have a vote on the one that was voted separately? Did you write down the line item for that one, Mr. Walker?
Hey, man, I know my little job down here that I keep.
Just checking.
Get him, McGee.
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker is a no. Uh, Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Well, it's six one.
All right, my apologies, Mr. Walker.
Not a problem, sir.
All right, now your next recommendation, sir?
Uh, President Smith, I'd like to bypass, uh, F until we come back from executive session.
Okay.
My next recommendation is, um, for the, um, approval of the memorandum of understanding with Rice State Boonshoff School of Medicine.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moving second. Any questions?
Who was that? Oh, I thought you do your job.
Either, either Bailey or Wick?
Yeah. Pick.
All right, any questions? Saying no, maybe we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker is a yes. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next recommendation?
Uh, I recommend the approval of the following memorandum, understanding with the Dayton Foundation plus Seedling Foundation.
I'll second it. Any questions?
Uh, yes. Oh, no, you can go.
Okay, on the last page of this MOU, there are a list of adjuncts. Does it make sense to put a list of adjuncts in here?
No.
Cause we kind of just approved that one was leaving us and then the MOU. So, does that need to be in the MOU? Can we just say adjunct is offered or something in general?
We have no problems with that.
Do you want to amend your motion?
I want to see what Mr. Walker has to say first.
All right. Let's see.
I just have to abstain from it.
That's fine. So, yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to change page six, the staff adjuncts to be just a general statement about adjuncts offered and not specific names of adjuncts.
Okay. Any other questions? Saying no, maybe we have a vote, Mr. Walker?
Voting on the.
Hold on, I have one more.
Huh? We had another one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is there a cost to this? And if so, what, what are we predicting the cost?
The cost of the Seedling Foundation?
Yes, the MOU talks about W two's, ten ninety-nines, the invoices, so I'm just kind of what we're looking at from our side.
Uh, we historically have paid about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to adjuncts.
Okay.
If I can, Dr. Lawrence, um, we do have somebody in the audience that can clarify this MOU just a little bit if there are questions. Um, if Ms. Isaacs, um, if you'd be, I, I, I know you're not here. You and I spoke about this earlier in passing, um, and if, if there are any questions, I'm sure she would be happy to answer those.
Since you threw her out.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Just come tell us about it, you know? From a former board member to the current one, what better time to talk?
I apologize. I don't hear as well as I used to. I am Yvonne Isaacs. For those of you that don't know me, it feels a little like deja vu to be back here. I first want to acknowledge President Smith, to all of the board members and to, uh, Dr. Lawrence, Assistant Treasurer. Did you have any specific questions for me?
Just can you tell us a little bit about the MOU? Just tell us about the MOU altogether?
Well, um, for several decades now, uh, the Dayton Board of Education has hired adjunct teachers to supplement education at Stivers for those students in the arts. And the number of hours that each adjunct can be paid is capped at fifteen hours a week. So, um, if an adjunct, uh, works, for example, eighteen hours, the three hours outside of the fifteen are paid for by the Seedling Foundation. Now, the resources to pay those students are monies that are raised by the, um, the magnet directors and the kids. So for example, you'll get an invitation to soup dressed up or to the photography, auction, or a number of different fundraisers at play. The dance magnet will put on, you know, um, performances and so forth, charge for that. So those resources then deposited with Seedling. And out of those resources, we then pay any extra hours that an adjunct would work. What we found, uh, is that if an adjunct worked for six hundred dollars a year over and above the fifteen hour their contract, we would issue, we being Seedling, would issue a ten ninety-nine to them. What we found out recently was, for example, the hours, the three hours, using that as an example, over and above the fifteen, when an adjunct was working those extra hours as, you know, requested by the school, they fell outside of the coverage for insurance purposes, for, um, you know, the union contract and all of that. They fell outside of the, 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 the window of that. So those teachers were not being covered and we didn't know that. They didn't know that. The other problem that we found out is because we, Seedling, issued the ten ninety-nines for those extra hours, the Seedling Foundation Volunteer Board was legally responsible in the event of an occurrence that, you know, an adjunct would be accused of doing something inappropriate. So we worked with Assistant Superintendent Lisa Minor, with Assistant Treasurer, with your General Counsel, Alex Ewing, and, um, Assistant Superintendent Minor proposed that what we should do is Dayton Public Schools would pay those additional hours upfront and then they would, uh, bill the Seedling Foundation back for reimbursement for any hours over and above the fifteen hours that an adjunct works. So it costs nothing to the school district, but it does provide coverage for the teachers. And it also, um, eliminates the risk for anyone who would volunteer to serve on the board because we, now that we know this, would have to disclose to a potential board member that, um, they would be assuming a risk in the event that, uh, the board, you know, the Seedling Foundation Board was sued. So it's, we see it as a win-win and I just want to thank again, um, this Assistant Superintendent Minor and, um, the Assistant Treasurer and also your counsel, Alex Ewing, I believe is his name, who drafted the resolution.
Any, any other questions?
Yes. So where did the fifteen hour limit come from?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here.
The fifteen hour limit?
She said, where did the fifteen hour limit come from?
It's the, uh, the.
It's been there since I was the chief of schools fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
But I don't know where it came from, it's always been there.
Fifteen hours that the district has limited, uh, the number of hours that an adjunct can work. It would be wonderful if that were lifted too.
Ms. King, can I make a request? Cause I can't find a quick policy that attests to that one. Can you look that up for us, please? Thank you. I know we have a couple of resolutions that go towards pay of them. So I am curious that if that is a barrier, that you guys, if that's a barrier to the services and what we're having is this fifteen, fifteen hour rule that if there's something we can look into as a board to kind of meet this need, I mean, I would.
She's suggesting that if it's a barrier, I think she's suggesting that why, why can't we have more hours?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what Dr. Goodwin's saying.
That would be a question that I, uh, you know, I think that would be a solution. That would be wonderful, a win-win. Um, this fifteen hours, I think, I don't know if it was an arbitrary number. It, it, it existed when I was on the board and that was two thousand one, two thousand two. So it's been on the books for a very long time. And I don't know where it came from and why it still exists because these are teachers um, that are working with students, um, in the Dayton School District and so.
I will ask Associate Superintendent Minor and then Chief of Schools Dooley, who was there for twenty-one years and the Treasury Staff to sit down and kind of cost project what that would cost at twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five. So, we'll, we'll follow up.
I'm going to say, since you've been a board member, you know how there are a lot of rules that people tell you about and you just can't seem to find them anywhere written down. And it's just the way that we've always done things, so.
I appreciate you asking the question. I really do. And I'm sure the teachers, uh, who are affected would appreciate that as well.
Is there a, is there a max on the reimbursement?
Well, the, the magnet directors can't spend over and above what they raise. So as they are asking teachers to work anything outside of those hours, they need to make sure that they have the resources in their budget to cover that.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, so Dr. Lawrence, would it?
Yes.
Is this something that's needed today or do you want to find out the answer to that question first?
Uh, something that's needed today because of the timeline, because of the pay scale, because of school is starting. We could always, uh, make some amendments to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the nice thing, if I just may say, um, Assistant Superintendent Minor proposed that the reimbursement be done quarterly. So I don't know if within the next three months, this is something that you could look at and, um, agree to, but we do have a little bit of a window.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Isaacs. Of course, uh, it's at the top of our list because you asked. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ms. Isaacs? Seeing none. Appreciate you, ma'am. Tell Matthew I said hello.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker abstains and Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
President.
Six and then one abstained.
Uh, President Smith, this is my final recommendation. I recommend the approval of the following memorandum of understanding Neighborhood School Centers for the school year twenty, twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Walker.
We went from sixty-five thousand to thirty-two five and I'm just curious of why.
We had a meeting at, um, uh, at the University of Dayton with all the Neighborhood School Center folks. And essentially what this boiled down to was, uh, alignment and what we were getting for the sixty-five thousand. And, uh, we, we, we came to this, actually, the Don Romano said we should just start over and have people reapply because things were so scattered in terms of the alignment with what we were doing in school. Like you had spaces where folks were doing, um, their thing and we had no supervision or control of that. It's for, it's for a number of reasons that are, um, yeah, a number of reasons that are in the past. And so moving forward, um, we agreed on some, um, shall we say, some ground rules on what we're going to do. For instance, like that we're all, all schools are going to use learning circles. So, uh, actually Omega CDC, uh, they have, what were innovator, first, first, um, uh, first, one of the first people to use it. So we're all going to use learning circles. So there are some attached criteria that go into this Neighborhood School Center memorandum of understanding so we can all be on this proverbial same page.
Can I follow up with that one, Mr. Walker, if y'all mind?
Absolutely.
With that, seeing that now we're agreeing to commit half the funding as before, are our partners putting up the other half?
So, the way this is working is Learn to Earn is going to serve as the fiscal agent. I met with all of the partners in this space and they're serving as a fiscal agent. And they've put together, uh, are putting together and it's, I think it's almost complete. I talked to Stacy, uh, a, a week ago. This space where, hey, now that we know that we have X number of dollars and it's front loaded now, we can pick up the second half of it next year. And also there's going to be, there are shared services that are out there now where they're actually agreeing to say, hey, we can use your FRC to do these things or we didn't need this service before, so now we'll forego it. So, they are working together, uh, under Learn to Earn as the fiscal agent to make sure that, uh, that agreement, that framework that we're going to agree to do after school is implemented.
Okay, follow up with that. What are we doing then on our side and how will we be? How will we make sure and keep track and report back to the board? Let us know. Cause one of those things I do not want to see is six months from now, we're seeing a drop off and then someone comes back and says, well, we couldn't do it because we didn't get XYZ dollars.
Uh, the first thing is, we agreed, well, we set up meetings with the Neighborhood School Center principals on a regular basis. Um, and also with the partners on a regular basis. So back to monthly meetings. So about fifteen years ago, they used to be monthly, used to meet over there in the, in Level One. And in those meetings, they would come up with metrics and talk about, hey, are we meeting them and are we doing the things we're supposed to do? And we also sent people out to, I want to say, not monitor, but to ensure that we were doing the same academic work or the extension of. So we've got kind of back to that format. And so we'll, we'll be meeting on a regular basis and we can report out to the board monthly.
All right. Any other questions? Dr. Goodwin?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm, I'm going to be honest with y'all. If I got half the money for a service, I'm going to give you half the effort. For the service. So are we predicting, well, not predicting. I mean, it's, it's just a natural assumption that the services, the amount of kids that they're going to be able to service is going to decrease because we took some resources out of it, is, is my first statement. And I just, outside of here, I'm getting different chatter from the neighborhood, uh, groups that did this than what we're hearing here. I'm not hearing a lot of individuals, I mean, no, no one's ever happy when they lose money. That's a, that's a normal. They're not happy. But, I don't know, knowing our, our climate outside in our neighborhood right now, where just about every month we have children who, who experience gun violence or some type of violence and these other things that are occurring, is it necessarily the best move for us to, to disinvest in a group when I'm hearing that we need more accountability and we need more time to know what's happening? So if we're doing these type of meetings and we're moving in those type of ways, did it make the most sense? Like, why does it make the most sense to pull resources out of something that is supplementing us outside of our school day? Knowing how disinvested the area is right now because we are one of the few providers that is, that is trying to keep putting into other communities or other organizations to keep us afloat when they're not with us at school.
Uh, this is our proposal. Uh, we think it's going to work and I'll leave it to the board to vote on it.
I would. Go ahead, Ms. Reiner.
Um, Superintendent, um, so you mentioned that Learn to Earn will be the fiscal agent. This doesn't name Learn to Earn at all. Is there going to be a separate MOU that will establish Learn to Earn as the fiscal agent for this program? I want to make sure that we're not overlooking anything. And, um, this, I mean, this covers part of it and I'm really, really grateful for this. I think our partnership with these neighborhood community school centers, um, these neighborhood organizations are fantastic. They're a real asset to the community in Dayton Public. Um, I think this is great. I want to make sure that we're closing the loop and establishing the formal relationship with Learn to Earn as the fiscal agent for this MOU.
Uh, to answer your question, yes, uh, we're working with Learn to Earn because the money is not going to be dispersed exactly evenly at thirty-two five. Cause there's some people who need it less, some people already have resources, some people need it more. So we can table this and then bring them back both together with the financial component of it attached.
I would like to offer a friendly amendment to change the rate to fifty thousand. To Board Member Lacy's motion.
Can I make?
I, I, I prefer the, I, actually, I prefer the, the recommendation to table that the Superintendent offered.
And my thought would be if we hold off, then really, because what I would want to see is what the full picture of everything is, what the full picture of Learn to Earn being the fiscal agent for this, what that looks like, what additional funding looks like. I would want to see what is the total piece that our Neighborhood School Centers would be getting. Because if they're not getting any additional funding, then I'll go back to saying that we need to relook at what we're giving at. Cause I mean, there's no way you're going to get the same services for half of what we were putting in if there's no one else picking up the slack there. Also, I think in wanting to maintain positive relationship spaces, getting everything on point, on point, having a full look at what this looks like, what we're going to do, what Learn to Earn would be doing, what are we expecting our Neighborhood School Centers to do? To really get a whole understanding of the picture we're looking at here. No problem, Mr. Walker.
No, I, I think in, I mean, I, I think that it's a, it's a plan to roll out. I don't think that within, like to go from a sixty-five thousand and slash it down. Um, I think when you look at nonprofits, they already pre-planned their budget. Um, and for something that, again, we're asking them to do service, they're willing to do the service inside of our building. But again, from being a nonprofit ED, I'm not going to give you my full work since you don't cut my funding. Um, it goes to reporting totally differently. Um, I think that the conversation that was had from my understanding, it was more of a, this is what we're doing and we're sticking to it. And I think it just needs to be a well-thought-out plan. I'm good if you say, hey, over the next three years, we need to look at rolling back funding because of budget restraints and things like that. Not within one year of slashing it fifty percent down.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to table it. I'd like to ask you that.
Motion was it?
I can withdraw the motion.
If the motion is withdrawn, then we can just take it off for right now.
All right. I could use my recommendations.
All right. Mr. Gotham? Ready? Ready?
I am. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, okay, Dr. Tyus' first recommendation is appropriate, uh, temporary appropriations amendment as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none. Mr. Walker, maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Next recommendation, sir?
Thank you. Uh, the next recommendation is approval of temporary certificate of estimated resources as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second. Moving second. Any questions?
Okay.
Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next recommendation?
Uh, next recommendation is approval of monthly financial statements. Uh, this was reviewed with the Finance Committee last Thursday.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any questions? Seeing none.
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next recommendation?
Uh, next recommendation is approval of minutes. Uh, we have June eleventh record retention and then June eleventh, eighteenth and twenty-ninth board, uh, uh, meetings.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker is a yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, next recommendation?
Uh, next recommendation is approval of couple of donations we got last month as approved last week.
So moved.
Second. Moving second. Any questions? Seeing none, as always, want to thank those that donated. And I am sure correspondence will be sent out to thank our donors. Mr. Walker, maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, next recommendation, sir?
Next recommendation is, uh, approval of a waiver of forty-eight hour rule to present the following purchase acquisitions for power schools.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right.
Okay, my last recommendation is approval of purchase acquisitions.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Oh, well, I, I'll move.
Second.
All right.
But then I was going to say, uh, um, I need to vote on Montgomery County Treasurer's office separately.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Uh, I need to vote on Dragonfly separate.
Okay. Any other questions?
Give me a second. Give me a second.
Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote on everything except for the two separate.
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
All right, now can we have a vote on Dragonfly?
Uh, President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Goodwin.
Abstain.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker abstains. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. And now for Montgomery County Treasurer.
President Smith.
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lacy.
Abstain.
Walker votes yes. Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Man, I hope you can read all this that I'm.
That concludes your recommendation, sir.
That does. Thank you.
Awesome job, sir. Appreciate the work you do. All right, Dr. Jones, did you have anything, sir? All right. Next, I will move over to Dr. Goodwin. You got anything for us, Dr. Goodwin?
Yes, I actually have two. One is something that kind of slipped through our cracks in September and it's the second reading of policy that align with legislation. So, in so much as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules and regulations, Mayo and the committee, which was appointed, has been working towards that goal. The following is brought at this time for second reading and compliance with board file. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of policies, rules and regulation. BDDG minutes, the changes to realign with legislation. EHA District Records Commission Record Retention and Disposal to, again, align with legislation. JDE Student Absences and Excuses to align with legislations and EHA dash R Data Retention, Records Retention to rescind to align with legislation. I move that we adopt these policies.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt. Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes, Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Right. Insomuch as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations. Manual of the committee which was appointed have been working towards that goal. The following is brought for the second time, for the second reading and compliance with board file. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of the policies, rules, and regulations. GBCBC, building access and safety. IGDL, athletic attendant zone for eligibility. KMB, relations with booster organizations. I move that we adopt these policies.
I'll second.
Any questions? I will say, appreciate the work of the Policy Committee. If you could just give me a quick understanding, what is the, the practice that we're changing? Dr. Goodwin, that would align with IGDL?
We gotta get back to that one. What's it, what's it called?
Athletic Attendant Zone for Eligibility.
We are changing our practice to be in align with OSHA. Currently, our practice is that a student has to sit out for one year if they transfer from one DPS school to another DPS school. Whereas, anyone else who transfer out of DPS only has to sit out of their activity for the, for half the season. So the second half of their season in the tournament. So our students are being penalized harsher than charter school, school students or any other student that is not within our district. So we are now aligning ourselves to be in align with the OSHA standards that tells you if a child transfers from one school to another, they are able to participate in fifty percent of the season and they have to sit out the second half of the season, including tournament.
Appreciate it, just wanted to let that be out there. Not only do other students not have to sit out the whole season, they also through OSHA could actually apply for a waiver to end up, uh, playing the whole year. So I appreciate the Policy Committee looking into that and taking away a barrier from these students. Any other questions?
None.
Maybe we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Witt.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes, Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
I got the down pat.
He literally just calling names.
See if he can read his memo.
That's for toy.
Alright, Dr. Goodwin, you got anything else for us?
Yep.
Okay.
Insomuch as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations. Manual and the committee which was appointed have been working towards that goal. The following are brought at this time for first reading and compliance with board file BFC, policy adoption. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of policies, rules, and regulations. JFCK, use of electronic communication equipment by students. These policies are being read for the first time. As such, a motion or second is not required. The policy will be available in the Superintendent's Office for further review and comment prior to the second reading and adoption by the Board of Education. Furthermore, the policies will be reviewed by the Superintendent's Office, the Board of, Board's Office, and the Legal Department of the Dayton Public Schools prior to the second reading. I will note that this is our cell phone policy, as many know that the governor has come down with every district having a timeline to get one in place. And let me just go ahead and put this surprise out there for everyone. Cell phones will not be able to be utilized in school during the school day. Ms. Kidd, this is, this is the wrong, uh, first reading that is up here, so if we can get that corrected, this has the old policy on it. So, we wanted to get this out for first reading today because we do want this to be in effect before the first day of school because we are significantly changing our policy not only to align with what our principals and our administration staff are telling us are working in the schools, to try to adhere with the objective here, which is to, again, have children and students more engaged during the school day and have them less distracted in a world that is not happening in the school. So, we've seen some success in some schools. We, if you guys haven't been following us, we started with the yonder pouches, actually, Dr. Jones at Thurgood started before everyone else where they just completely took phones away. Then we went to the yonder pouches, and then we had some schools last year that used middle of folders, and they went back to a model of completely taking phones at the beginning of school and then giving them back at the end of the school. So, this policy will put us not only in compliance with the state, it will also put us, get us more on the same page throughout our district with schools and how we are handling that. That's it.
Appreciate it, any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Lacy?
I mean, as a parent with a child that was in a summer program, and where this, where this was in practice, I wanna, I, 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 I think it was, it was far more productive. And, and, and I appreciate it, that's all I fully support, thank you.
Appreciate you, Mr. Lacy.
I got one more. I will say, as having a student at Thurgood when, who has gone now, this would be his third year of not having access to his phone, you see a significant growth in, like, the work that they're doing there. Still doesn't talk to anybody when he has a phone, but it is, the grades are, I mean, they don't, they just don't talk. And maybe socialization and talking at lunchtime will become a thing again. But seeing that, that academic growth and that change has been a real jump for him not being able to access the phone during the school day.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. You got anything else for us, Dr. Goodwin?
I do not.
Alright, uh, Ms. Reiner, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Alright, Dr. Bailey, you got anything?
Are these our closing comments? Because I have more. Oh, yeah, I got some other things.
I was trying to move it quick when she said, when she said, I was gonna move it. Alright, Mr. Walker?
Yes. Um, so for me, um, last week I got to attend a conference, um, in Boston, uh, at Harvard. The, uh, William Wilson, Winston?
William Julius Wilson.
William Julius, yeah. Uh, Summer Institute, um, great opportunity to really learn of work that is being done, um, through that national entity, really, and the work of our partners here with Omega CDC. Um, I'm excited for what the year will bring based upon going to that session, um, and really seeing the transformation in the buildings that they do provide service in. I will say that I am. I think as a, as a whole, um, I just, I think we are, we can be on the right track, I think there's still some work to be done. I think that we have to do way, 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 way much better at really talking to the individuals that work here within the district, um, and not blindside and, um, based upon behaviors and things like that. I think that when it comes to our parent, family, community engagement components, uh, we have some work that we are doing on committee side, that we're looking at policy side. Um, I'm excited for what the year will bring out of the buildings. Um, and I just, I, hopefully, that, again, across the district and all rather you are, custodial staff, bus driver, um, parent, caregiver, teacher, HR staff, um, safety and security, whatever the case is, that everyone is staying true to one of the five Cs that I enjoyed the most hearing about is communication. I think that we have to do much, but, much, much better in that category as a district. Um, and I think that that starts across the board and it's not just one single department. It's a team effort, and I look forward to seeing the work of the team. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Walker. Mr. Lacy?
Can I pass for a second?
Oh. Mr. Lacy about to come at you? He got something for you, Dr. Goodwin?
Yes, I have a couple things, actually. So in finance, before, you know, joking, sort of juicy stuff, we actually got a chance to dive in, and we've been on our principal fund for the longest. And one of the questions I wanted to bring to the board was, if you guys don't know how the principal funds work, they are funds that are raised by the, the actual schools individually and put into them. So I made a request to the committee to get us kind of what the principal funds sit at. And what I met shared with us during that meeting was that we have an inactive fund of schools that are no longer in existence, which has a hefty amount of funds in it. And those are schools that, you know, like Allen, a school I went to that got tore down. Colonel White, another one that's gone. Thurgood Middle School, all those different schools, where that funding is just sitting, it's sitting in a pool and not being utilized. So I did want to talk to the board today about, oh, someone has to print out, that's always nice. I did want to talk to the board today and actually make a, put a motion out to divide the funds from the inactive schools amongst our active schools with the exception of Stivers, but only not adding Stivers because they are significantly higher than every other school. For example, most schools don't top out at higher than three thousand, and Stivers has fifty-two thousand in their principal fund. That's a significant difference right there. So I don't think that they should take from that pool, but I do think that we should divide that inactive fund amongst the active schools for them to be able to utilize that. So, I like to make a motion that we actually divide the inactive, or allow the Treasury to divide equally the inactive principal fund of inactive schools amongst our active schools with the exception of Stivers.
Saying what now?
Well, I was, I was gonna make the motion, but I, I don't know, um, that I agree. I mean, I was just gonna divide it amongst the schools based upon their school populations. I mean, I think that money should go to all the students.
I like the population piece.
Well, we can do it by population, that's cool.
But that would include Stivers.
I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
That's wanted to be used at this one.
Yeah. Let me get the sheet and show.
So I'm gonna take that back. So then the second part, though, because we also talked about, I do think that we should add some type of incentive to, for fundraising. And when we discussed it, or when we talked about it, I think we should at least match the first thousand that a school raises each year in their funds with a thousand from the board, from it.
So, yeah, and I'll second the motion, if, if that's your motion, to do it based upon, the most recent population numbers that we have. It'd be the three hundred and forty-four thousand, forty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Don't give me a scared look on it.
I'm almost about to pour that.
Because you thought, that, the idea kind of came from you. Out of fun, that's, that currently is, it's appropriated. But, uh, uh, out of the Fund eighteen, with the total balance at the end of June for Fund eighteen, it was five hundred thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And we want, it really, they, we just want to allocate the three hundred and forty-four thousand, forty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, which is currently allocated to schools that do not exist. Um, we want to reallocate them, we want the Treasurer's Office to reallocate them to schools that do exist. And, uh, and to inform those principals that that money is available. Reallocated based upon the most, I don't know what would, what would be the most recent student population.
If I, if I can, um, make a comment here, I think the conversation about, uh, how we disperse these funds, you know, some schools are very highly populated and some are less, so I think that's one that I'm willing to have. Um, have we talked with the principals? Have we talked with our, our teachers and, and, um, the relevant staff that would be affected? And brought them in and made them a part of this conversation? Um, has that happened yet?
No.
Well, what we learned from finances, and most principals don't know how to access their own principal fund. So we did make a request to Treasury to start doing and creating some recorded trainings that the principals can see to get from them knowing that the money exists, to actually being able to utilize the funds.
I think that's great. I would like to have the conversation with our principals and with the relevant staff in these buildings. Um, get their input, maybe, um, course correct in a slightly different way. I'm just not entirely comfortable with making this decision right now without having brought in our employees and valuing their, their feedback and their perspective, um, before making this change.
Any other thoughts?
So. Are, are you asking for us to talk to the principals and seeing if they want us to give them five thousand dollars or not?
Yeah.
Not take the money.
I think that valuing our employees means that having a conversation with them about changing the way that we have historically done a program for quite some time means that we don't just make the decision on the fly. I think that there might be larger things at play that we might not be aware of. And bringing them together, respecting the work that they do, and making sure that they understand that we're not doing this in a way that they would be taken aback of, is the way that this board ought to function.
Okay, I think I'm a little bit different. I think that, for me, I think that I'm fine with giving each building a cap of five thousand. And if we're gonna match a thousand dollars of them fundraising, I think it should come out of the remainder of those funds dollars.
Good idea. I might just want to incentivize them to, because the principal fund is purely from things.
They're not gonna turn down free money.
Well, it's, it's money right now that's not going anywhere.
Right, and then?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
But I do think putting a piece on there, which I think Dr. Goodwin already talked to about, working with them on ways to, on things that they can use this for. I think, a lot of times, you hear, you hear conversations, you hear things in buildings saying that, hey, we have to go find funds for X, Y, Z, because they do not know that there's.
Correct, that they gotta.
A chunk of money sitting in every single school. When we talk about some of these things around, we can't do this, or we had a group of kids that wanted to do, uh, a club, and we didn't, we trying to get out into the community and find funding. And it's like, well, how much is it? It's a thousand dollars, we haven't even built it. So I think, um, now, are you asking Dr. Goodwin to put it all in one motion, the, the matching fund piece? And the reallocation of the inactive building funds? Is that one motion or is it two separate things? Or is it one to do now or one to think about?
Let me, let me ask Claire, so, do we want to give, so I heard my pupil, I heard five thousand, and I also want to do the matching thing. Do you guys just want to put a cap on what we give? Because we only have, I mean, when money's gone, it's gone. So do we want to, like, give them something to start with and then match them to? Because five thousand of the twenty-seven billion, that takes a hundred and thirty-five thousand of it.
Alright.
I. I mean, I, I, I don't know if that, the schools where the principal is just not, is, might be too busy with other things, isn't, doesn't have the time to put together fundraisers, because really, this is all fundraiser money.
Right.
Fundraiser money that was never spent. And, so, I, it kind of. I like the idea of matching funds, but it, it, it kind of penalizes kids that are in the school.
That he's gonna give you.
That's not good.
I'm for just, I'm for just dispersing the whole chunk throughout the district.
But I want to do something continuously, though, because I think we should match them with some funds beyond this period. Not just on this point right here. Because how do you help people grow their money? When if, if I get a thousand dollars and the board at least matched me a thousand, and I had two thousand to work with.
I think that's a good conversa, I think that's even a conversation for where we can actually find some other partnerships, too. I wouldn't want to put the lockers down for that one yet, but I do want to have that conversation. Because I think it is a good incentivizing piece, and it's kind of like alongside of what we do over in, um, at the session, we offer opportunities for programs to get some funding there. But, today, I'm for, like, the, the piece around the inactive building funds. No point sitting around in the fund, it's not getting used by anybody. I suppose that whole thing.
Can I? Okay.
Dr. Dr. Lawrence, when do, I'm sorry, um, when do, do the principals all meet together on a regular basis?
Secondary and elementary do. Um, when I was business manager last year, we had this conversation in Cincinnati about the Principals Fund. Um, it's part of the conversation on the twenty-third to make sure that they spend their money down this year. Uh, we've already spent most of the Title I money, most of the grant money, most of it's gone, if I'm not mistaken, I meant. So the idea is to spend all of this money now upfront so that we're spending it on kids, um, so that we don't have it encumbered at the end of the year. So, it's a conversation.
Thank you, I would like to respectfully request, um, on, I, I don't know who made that motion, that, um, the motion be pulled and then this be a topic of conversation with the principals at their next meeting, and, um, we can bring it back. I would love to hear from Dr. Lawrence what that conversation. I would love to hear from Dr. Lawrence what that conversation was like, and, um, and, and I think I'd be willing to go from there.
I think eighteen of the buildings, something like that, have a thousand dollars or less. So, in transportation this year, the number of field trips almost tripled. So principals spend a lot of money traveling, a lot of money on trips. So those numbers, um, that, that, most are aware. There are a few that are, uh, that are pretty high, um, but most are aware.
Can I? So, can the funding in this be allocated to, let's say, Student Activity Fund as well? Or is it strictly Principal Fund?
It was fundraising money.
It was fundraising money, so it's Principal Fund money, right?
So. And I, yeah, I'd kinda like to keep.
Keep it in the fund where it's at.
Yeah. You can stand up on it.
You can stand up.
Or you can, or you can come up.
No, I think under Ohio law.
Uh, because these are inactive funds, you know, uh, so, the only thing we can do is transfer it to the general fund, uh, if we don't use it in the principals' fund, because, uh, the activity is done, the schools are no longer there, the buildings are no longer there. So it can't be used by that building. So we have two options, either we allocate it, how we're discussing, or we move it to the general fund. We don't have an option to move it to a Students Activity Fund. Now you can move it to the general fund and then transfer it to the Student Activity Fund.
So my, I think, so my question would come in, um, looking at our extracurricular activities, uh, providing some funding for them, um, as well. Um, if we're looking to, let's say, here's five thousand for buildings, a thousand for the Student Activities Funds, um, inside of the buildings as well, that way they're able to, like, jumpstart their fundraising efforts as well.
So, so you're on to something, uh, Board Member Walker, that the principals would, it, it's bigger than just give me the five thousand. So instance, President Bellhaven, they're gone all the time. They may want that money in the Student Activity, because they stay on field trips, which is a great thing, which is why that, the culture there is so great, and why they're doing what they're doing academically. So, they should actually have the opportunity as principals to say, hey, this is how I want that money dispersed.
Dr. Lawrence, do they have restrictions on what they can use the principal fund for?
No.
No, no restrictions.
They still use it for.
Exactly what you just said, okay.
Yes, I mean, it's, that's why, the, the beauty of that fund is, it's that school's money.
True, but I would, I would want to designate it like, Students Funds.
You're trying to make it restrictive though. It's, I mean, it's their discretion.
All right, if you put it there, it's their money.
It's a discretionary fund for them. All right, so, yeah, so the motion out there was to use it per pupil.
I didn't write down the motion, I think we were still discussing what the motion was gonna be.
That's why I'm clarifying what it was, because I, I just added on to what Joe said to my original motion. Oh, you second. So, the motion on the floor was to use the inactive building funds and to disperse it per pupil population to the active schools. Is that correct, Joe?
Yeah. And that, and, and yeah, I'd, I'd stay with that motion. Or I, I, that's what I seconded.
Yep, that's it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what's the motion?
You said it.
What was it? There was a lot of words there.
The motion was. I thought you said you had the job down, down there.
Take the three hundred and forty thou, three hundred and forty-four thousand and forty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, you're not writing this down.
I'm listening to you, I'm trying to get it.
And, and we'll, um, we'll divide it amongst the schools per, by their population, the most recent population, of the most relation, recent populations that we have.
I'm amended to say the, the, the October one that where our account happens at, for that to be it?
That's fine.
Yes.
All right, we're, we can vote.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Walker, my fault. Any other questions before a vote?
I think you're the first one to vote, you.
You didn't say my name.
Because you were still to have the conversation. President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Wick.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes, Ms. Reiner.
No.
Six more.
All right, I have two more things.
All right.
Uh, one, I didn't make it to your, the board retreat, but I do want to request if we can get a presentation on how we did on our, our scores, our testing, just to have that public piece right there and ask questions on that one. And, the committees are busy, I'm just telling you that, we're doing a lot of work.
All right.
I meant, that's it for me.
Appreciate you, Dr. Goodwin. Dr. Bailey? Yeah, um, yeah, but I asked a question. You'll be all right. I don't know if I'll take as long as you or not. Um, you know, I've been watching television a little bit, and I'm looking at all these other charter schools, putting these commercials out and everything. I don't know if this is something that we can do, but I would love to see, um, DPS put a commercial out now, but, but fairly quickly, um, showing the changes that we have made, um, with Dr. Lawrence, maybe someone from the school board and some of our students. Uh, for example, like, you know, transportation, we've got the transportation kind of under control a little bit. I would love to see us kind of advertise DPS a little bit more positive.
She gonna get it.
Because right now, I mean, we, we're always looked at, uh, in a negative way. So I, I'd like to know if we're able to do that, uh, and when we're able to do that, uh, to show a better positive light on DPS. The other thing for me is, we've been talking about the five Cs, five Cs, five Cs, and one of the things that I've talked about has been culture. And, I think that culture is starting to change, but we also have to give it a chance to change. I think culture starts at the top, I think it starts with our, our, uh, board members. Um, I think the culture has kind of changed by what I've heard about the board before and how we interact with each other now. Um, Dr. Lawrence has a new board, uh, or a new, uh, faculty that he, a team that he has, and I'm hoping that he is discussing culture with them continually, and I'm hoping that it is changing. So, I would just say that, those that are listening here and out there, that we try to be patient with some of the changes that are going on, um, and make the culture better, and not be so negative right off the jump. Um, if things don't work, then that's when I feel like we need to have some complaints, uh, and then change can occur. But we also have to give Dr. Lawrence a chance to do his job. That's what we pay for, that's what we brought him in for, uh, and then if he's not doing his job, then I think that's when we hold him accountable for that. But we've got to give him the opportunity to do his job. Uh, as a board, I think that our culture is starting to change, and I hope that DPS culture is starting to change, and that's really all that I have. Appreciate you, Dr. Bailey. Ms. Wick.
Thank you. Um, thank you, board members, for all of your comments and all the work you do. I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you, Superintendent Lawrence, new team, excited for a new school year. I would like to request that, I know I had a couple emails today about open houses that are going to happen, and if we would have a total list and manifest of when those open houses are occurring. I think that is one of the most exciting times of the year. We really have the opportunity to capture our families. People are, for the most part, excited to come back to school. So, I'd really like to build on those, um, opportunities. I'd like to make sure all of our active parent organizations are engaged and in those buildings so we can attract those parents that maybe are new to schools and they don't know anybody, or they may not even know how to be a parent as well as you do. And, uh, it's such a learning opportunity, so I really want to make sure that I get that, um, if you can help me with that, Dr. Lawrence. The other piece of that too, um, I've had our partners from CareSource request that if they could have tables at those open houses, a lot of our families, uh, you know, connecting dots for services and opportunities, it would be a great time to have our community partners in too. As we talk about, um, after-school activities and community partnerships, I think that we can all agree that, um, it is best for our kids, um, to be in the schools as long as they can, I mean, successful, really successful programs. Stivers, the kids are in the buildings after school all day long, our athletics are in the schools, uh, you know, they're at school after, after hours, and any programs that we can continue to have in our buildings that keep our kids in schools and safe places, I'm certainly in support of that. That also helps with our transportation, um, opportunities that we have. Uh, oftentimes, our kids want to get on the RTA buses because there's not a lot to do in the neighborhoods, and not as much to do in the buildings as I know that we're going to make happen. So, I'm looking forward to a great new school year, and I appreciate you all, so, lovely evening.
Thank you. Dr. Marvin Jones, you got anything?
What's up?
You letting me down.
Ready for exam session.
Dr. Lawrence?
Uh, just, uh, to, um, Dr. Bailey's comments, thank you. We're in the process now preparing for convocation, and that means telling the story of our, uh, pre-K through three kids, four, five, six, middle school, high school, and some of the successes from last year. Uh, PIO, uh, I think I said in my board update a couple weeks ago, uh, another set of awards, so they're in the process of putting that space together. Um, the theme for, um, convocation is all the pieces matter, which means everybody in the organization matters in order for us to be successful. And I'm gonna ask them, as you, as you stated, if they can turn it around into a commercial. We have a commercial that is running now, a sixty-second one that's running on the, uh, on the radio right now, but if we can turn it into a video commercial.
That I, yeah.
That's it.
All right. Um, do you want to follow up with what Dr. Bailey also mentioned about that? We, me and Dr. Lawrence have been in conversations, um, around doing a few little pieces, to use the word, videos, to talk about some of the upcoming things in this year, talk about some of the things we want to see, um, encouraging people as we go back to school. So I know we had talked about it last year, wanted to kind of build on that. Know we had talked with Ms. Winfrey last year about just putting out pieces around safety for transportation, putting out pieces around, you know, talking to our community, you know, that, get back to office and they see school buses back on the road, about how, how do we need to, to act around those situations. Just really wanting to get out there and be visual, have those social media pieces, um, shared out there. So we've been working on some of that, so I'm glad you mentioned that, so we can share that piece. Um, student, we had a student activities, uh, Mr. Walker and myself, along with some district leadership, met with City of Dayton Recreation to talk about, um, just some of the issues that they may see barriers they have in filling some of their programs, finding ways that we could supplement each other and some things. So, um, we talked about after-school activities, um, it was a really, really good conversation around how we could find some meaningful programming solutions, how we could create new opportunities. Um, so I want to thank Mr. Walker, he came with some great ideas. Want to thank Mr. Bailey, uh, Dr. Bailey even in his absence, we've been talking about that, and so really getting a big jump on what we look at at student activities. Also, we have a meeting coming up with another group that Dr. Bailey gave some great names to. When we look at student activities, really looking at what that looks like during the year, during the summer, on the weekends, um, what that programming looks like on multiple levels. I know the meeting we had, we talked about that young elementary level. Also, we put a big chunk of time of talking about how we can create programming for our middle school students, understanding that that is, um, um, a pain point in our district is what are we doing for our middle school students during the school year, during the summer? Seeing some of the things that, that we see, they see. And really starting to open up that, that communication. Then we talk about the programming that go on in our community, um.
Over at Adventure Central.
As well, there's so many good programs that are going on, where Dayton Public Schools can be a conduit, one, getting information out. It's one of the biggest things you hear is people say, well, I just didn't know the program was going on. Or, you know, capacity. And when you have either rec centers or programs that don't have the staffing capacity to take on fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty kids, then it's looking at us, okay, well, what does that look like? How can we help with those things? Understanding how we can utilize our staff in different ways. So it was a really, really good conversation. I want to thank Dr. Jones and Dr. Lawrence as well for what they brought to that conversation, and Chief Jones as well. So that was a really, really good, uh, conversation, really, really excited to see how we can move that, not only with the City of Dayton, but other, other programs that are offering activities for students that attend Dayton Public Schools, that we need to really connect with. Because we're not doing ourselves any justice if we're operating in silos, and we're not doing any favors for our students and families if we're creating more barriers. And I want to say transportation was one of the pieces that came up in that space too. We talked about, you know, how does that help? Um, how can we create those solutions there? So that was great. We had some good conversations in our previous two Welcome Stadium meetings on some of the things we're looking at doing over in that beautiful facility, so looking forward to that. Just want to get everybody that noticed, uh, ahead of time, get over to that, um, Spirit Shop, some nice things over there. I want to thank Dr. Goodwin for the extensive work that she's been doing there. She's been doing a lot of work over at the Spirit Shop, and I've been working with, uh, Mr. Rayford to do some things around our concourse. Uh, just want to let our Roosevelt grads out there know that we are actually putting a casing around the old Roosevelt Teddy. Yes, it's still around, we're gonna case that up. Next, we got some things for the old Patterson Beavers. So we just really, really want to show, don't pump your fist, Dr. Bailey. Um, we just really want to show our district that appreciation. We have so many things that have been around for so long, and it does us no use sitting up in a storage warehouse somewhere. And so really finding ways that we can bring community out, to congregate and be together, so, that's huge. And last, I just want to tell everybody, please, 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 be as safe as possible, have conversations with your children about the things that are going on in the community. Um, there's so many things going on negatively, not only in the local level, but we see things at a national level. And the things that feed into our young students' brains, our young adult minds, just have these conversations, because there's so many things going on. And summertime can be a scary time, um, when we have that lack of things to do. So let's find ways to be positive, ways to help our students, uh, help our young folks, and really be safe out here, because there's a lot of things going on, and we're really, really, really not wanting to see these, uh, kind of behaviors escalate. So, want to thank everybody that's been in those conversations around how we can find creative solutions to improve the level of quality of life in our community. And that is all I have, and I'm gonna do this with my eyes closed, Mr. Lacy. Pursuant to section one-two-one dot two-two-G two.
He looking, he can't do it.
Huh? Oh, man. Of the Ohio Vice Code, I move this board going to executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal of a public employee, and confer with an attorney involving pending or imminent court action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been moved to second. I did have my eyes closed until Goodwin said something.
Non-Greeks.
May I have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Wick.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
That's what all three of them came back and said.
All right, now that we're here, now that we're here.
Two or three are gathered.
Pursuant, oh, man, that ain't the one I need.
No, you know.
Let the record show.
I know. Let the record show that this Board of Education is returned from executive session, where we considered the appointment, employment, dismissal of a public employee, as well as conferred with an attorney involving pending or imminent court action.
Second.
May I have a second to move back into our business meeting?
Second.
It has been seconded, do we have any questions? May we have a vote?
President Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Wick.
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Lacy.
Yes.
Walker votes yes, and Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
All right. Next door to business, we had some items that were pulled to vote on after executive session, I'll entertain a motion for those.
I move that we adopt all the HR agenda items that were pulled.
We moved a second, do we have any questions on those?
Uh, I would like to vote on item one separately.
Okay, so, any other questions?
All right, let me, we vote on separations and all of them together, Kurt?
No, we didn't vote on them separating, no, we just voted.
No, separations.
So, the only one that was pulled was number one, number two, and number forty.
Okay.
So, you want to vote on the number one separately, correct?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? All right, Mr. Walker, can we have a vote on all the other ones, please?
Uh, so this is on item two and forty. President Smith?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes yes. Uh, Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Can I have a vote on the sole item?
I'd like to make comments first, please.
Yes.
All right.
I'd prefer it to the junior board member.
Junior board member has been recognized.
So, I do want to thank Dr. Burton for her service as this district for 20-plus years. I do want to say, you know, you may not get this from all of my colleagues, so let me be the one to say that I apologize that it reached to this level, and hope that going forward for anyone in this district, that they are provided with better opportunities than what you were provided in this last year or so. I really hope that some individuals that are on the chain of the board, that lead a lot of efforts, whether at the top, at the bottom, in the middle, that everyone can be treated like they actually have a voice and opportunity in this district, and not feel that they are being ran away because of others' insecurities, disheartened, opportunities that were not offered before, and that this is not a retaliation mission going forward. I really, truly hope that as a body, we can be better, but at this point, I'm not even sure if that can happen, but as my colleague said, I, I hope that we can, but things continue to happen that shows me that it is not possible. So, hopefully, one day, we can become one actual district that actually supports the staff that we have and really invest in them and with all of their opportunities and the services that they provide us. Hopefully, it gets better, but I'll see what happens on the next day. That's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Goodwin?
Thank you. I do want to say, I want to thank Dr. Burton for her service to our district. I do, I do not know what is next in your endeavors, but as anything, I do wish you the best. I do hope that the time that you had with us, I hope that not only that the individuals that you came across, that you were able to really make, I know you made lasting relationships with individuals here, and just from a true space of, it is definitely hard work to work in an organization for 20-plus years. I think any, it's a lost art, too. My generation definitely does not go beyond probably five or 10 years these days. So, I do want to thank you for your service. I appreciate the time that you spent with us. I've only gotten to know you for two and a half years, but even in that time, every time I, I got to speak with you, you were a wealth of knowledge to this district. You will be missed, and I'm sure immensely, by several individuals who have worked with you over the years. I just want you to know that it was a pleasure of working with you. I understand the reason surrounding your exit, but I want you to know that for me in my seat, I, I wish nothing but just good, good vibes, good futures on what comes next for you, and thank you again.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lacy?
I'd also like to thank Dr. Burton, and I've worked several years with her, and I've seen her at several daisies and several positions, and I've enjoyed working with you, and I wish you well in, in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Any other comments? And I also want to echo those sentiments, appreciate you, Dr. B. We've had a chance to really have some real good conversations over the last few years, and just want to wish you well on whatever comes next, and we're here, I'm here for you. We know we've not always been easy, but you've always been there when you could be, so I appreciate that, and just want to say thank you, really say thank you, and I think this district would be better off if we thanked people more often, especially give them their flowers while they're here with us as well. There are no other comments, no other questions. Mr. Walker, can we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes no. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Marvin Jones, did you have anything, sir?
We have one more superintendent recommendation.
Which one was that?
The organization chart.
Uh, we did have that one. Dr. Marvin Jones, you can just stand there and hold up, because you part of this one, too. Just in case we have any questions. Dr. Lawrence? You wanted to hold off on F until after executive session?
Yes, I recommend approval of F with the changes made earlier in executive session.
So moved.
Second, is it opening for anybody?
It's not.
I've seen it, it's pulled up. Now, it says there's an error process in my request. No, I'm opening on executive content.
Can we come back to it? Can Mr. Lacy withdraw his motion?
I will draw my motion.
Mr. Lacy has withdrawn his motion. See, that's why you were standing up there. Then we go to Dr. Jones and then come back. Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir. I recommend approval of the 48-hour waiver to present the following purchase requisitions to.
Hold on, before he does that, is this, is it on here? Is it different?
The treasurer's business manager's recommendation.
Oh.
This treasurer.
Uh, the 48-hour waiver, though, is showing power schools. So, is that what you're recommending?
No, it's not.
No, it's, uh, it's showing BSN Sports, Daktronics.
It says Dak, it says BSN Daktronics.
Let me refresh. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any questions?
Just wait one second, so I can actually see it, please.
You want to let on 48-hour waiver?
Yes, I want to know what I'm voting on.
All right.
Can I see your screen?
The time is ticking. It's under purchase requisition.
This is, this is F under the treasurer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's like, so power schools is what we're.
It's not. Dr. Goodwin?
That's what both Bailey and mine is showing now.
Underneath executive session.
It says treasurer's recommendations to, number eight. The bottom, if you scroll.
Oh, it was the second part. All right, thank you. Right.
All right, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes yes, Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
All right.
I have a question, though.
Go ahead.
On the last, on the 48-hour, that's coming to the next one, it says three middle schools, so is charity add, is not included in this at all?
No, ma'am.
Are we doing anything for, do they have sports at charity add?
Uh, they have sports, however, when you, like basketball and everything, I don't think that it's as, uh, well-attended or heavily populated. I'll, I'll check to make sure.
It's a all-girls school, that may be gender discrimination on y'all part.
This was, this is doing, the initial call came when we were going to do all the schools, and this came when I was the business manager, and then we had an S or hiccup, and charity wasn't included then, because we weren't sure it was going to be open.
Okay.
I think the number of students in grade seven and eight are, are really, really lean.
They kicking up, they moving. Don't sleep on charity.
Ain't enough for us.
Go ahead.
Any other questions? All right, saying none.
He has to make his recommendation.
Oh, did he?
No, I asked the question before he got there.
Oh, you cut him off, go ahead.
What's that?
Your perker.
So, I recommend approval of section 8B, purchase requisition for scoreboards.
So moved.
I'll second it. Now, do we have any other questions?
I just asked if I'm looking at charity.
Okay.
Any other questions? Saying none.
President Smith?
He was asking questions? Oh, he was, he didn't even let me get my line out.
We was already there. Let's go.
Yes.
Vice President Witt?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes yes, Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
All right, thank you.
That all we have for tonight's business?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir. I entertain the motion to adjourn.
No, it's work chart.
Oh, that's right.
You slow down.
I'm trying to go.
Pay attention, you got to do your duty.
I'm trying to go. Uh, now it's there. All right, all right. Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend the approval of the following org chart.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, any questions?
One second.
I mean, give me some time.
Nah, you was about to move, man.
No, when, you, you control the vote.
Oh, no, that's not. Okay, so, I want to make sure you guys.
This still isn't right.
It's the old one, but I could just make the moves on the floor if you want me to.
If you want.
This kid, is this the only one that you received? Yes, because this is the, this is the one that was already up.
Um, nah, nah, some things that was different.
Okay, well, we can just make them on the floor. If I miss something, just please add on. I'd like to amend my motion to move safety and security under the business manager to increase safety and security coordinators, or, no, that's fine, that one's fine.
That was fine, it was just a move to where, no.
Correct. There was a, to add a, was it a, what, what was the assistant? No, for you.
Project manager.
A project.
Project manager and coordinator of projects.
That's on there, too.
But that's underneath operations and not, is it standard operations or under the business manager?
No, it can, it can sit there.
That's fine, that's all right.
Yep, so project manager and coordinator of projects.
Yeah, that's there.
Okay.
And then the, oh, sorry.
To move the confidential support manager under operations and to add a executive assistant for the business manager, was that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think that was it.
The athletics department, is that right, or is things missing?
Uh, no, that's correct. The coordinator is the Welcome Stadium Coordinator.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't listed on the last chart either.
So, you have six athletic directors slash coordinators, plus the intramural position, and then the Welcome Stadium Coordinator position. We just didn't add the, like, the groundskeepers.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like two of them, right? Two for welcome.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Red?
I said the. Okay, I think I'm good.
I do want to say thank you guys all for working on this one. I am excited that this is done, because I know it helps you all focus and us to just do bigger things and move forward. So, thank you for, Dr. Lawrence, Dr. Jones, and Treasurer Braha for the work on this, and Chief Davis, because Chief Davis came in and putting in the typing for it. Yeah, she was moving those fingers.
Mr. Walker?
Under the board clerk, it's a role missing.
There are no clerks on there at all.
Yeah, they didn't put supportive.
Okay, can we, so looking at the internal auditors, instead of waiting, can we add a confidential support manager in that area? Instead of getting asked for it later, we know that they're going to need some, a support person, but we do onboard an individual.
Well, we'd be the one granted, Mr. Walker. It's our, it's our position.
It's ours. Any other questions? Will say, I'll echo the sentiments. Dr. Goodwin, appreciate this, but I also want to add, I want you all to not look at these as the pieces of, you know, your pieces, a business manager piece, and then treasurer's, absence of treasurer's piece, Dr. Lawrence, the superintendent piece, but understand that we're all part of one district, and so I encourage that crossing over, there are going to be pieces of the org chart that inherently touch all of you at different times. So, I think that is the board's vision of having the three of you reporting to the board, just understanding that you guys have to triangulate some of those pieces and have those conversations, which I am pleased to see that, just that increased conversation that has been going on and been working on between all of you, and understand your different roles, there are going to be times when people need to have conversations on all sides and just work together to make these things work, because it's all for our staff, our students, and our family, so I appreciate that.
I have one more amendment to add.
Go ahead, Dr. G.
The SRO is to reflect 50. It doesn't reflect anything right now. But that's it.
Do we?
Yeah, we put in a number on it.
There is a number on it.
All right.
I do have a question looking at this.
Go ahead.
The operations coordinator for grounds. Is it not reporting to the direct operations, or is these? I mean, how many roles is needed in this department?
I, I would say, right now, we, we probably need all of the roles, but I think as individuals leave the department, we have some, some folks nearing retirement, will start to change the names and perhaps some of the roles and responsibilities of these individuals to better meet the needs of the district.
And then, since I have you, the ed tech app coordinator, is that a new role in IT? I, I never saw that.
No, no, sir, no.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Any other questions? Comments? Anything? Saying none, but being sure there's room for many. Mr. Walker?
President Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Witt?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yo.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Walker votes yes, Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to adjourn?